This meeting of the Tyler ISD, uh, Tyler ISD Board of Trustees is called to order. There is a presence of a quorum. The meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. I do not believe that we have anybody signed up for public participation. It's, uh, yeah, we do. I know. But, uh, so we don't have that, so we're gonna go to the continuous improvement part of our agenda and we'll start out with, uh, early benchmark scores.
Yes, sir. We have today, the Executive Directors of School Improvement are going to present this, uh, information to you. They're gonna be supported by Dr. Kristi Hansen, Assistant Strategic Curriculum Instruction as well. Um, again, these are benchmark scores that gauge where we're really at as far as the curriculum goes and, um, as we prepare to, uh, as we prepare to, uh, do the spring blitz, or we're actually in the middle of the spring blitz, but this is the time of year that we present the benchmark data to you. So Dr. Julie Davis, Mr. Jared Bender, School Improvement Officers, Executive Directors of School Improvement.
Good morning, President Washman, Dr. Crawford, and Board Members. Thank you for letting us, allowing us to come today and present this information to you. We're just gonna start with slide one. Overall, just as a reminder, our scores are based on four levels. It's, uh, gradually increases in performance level. We have a not met, the approaches, the meets, and the masters. And so overall, our approaches, meets, and masters tells us that our kids are on grade level, but the amount of intervention or supports they may need, um, within those ranges. The, also, the data we're gonna present today is going to be the early benchmark, which is fourth grade and seventh grade writing, um, it's fifth and eighth grade math and reading, and, um, English one and English two. So, starting with the beginning data, we have elementary first. This is our cohort data, and cohort means overall, we're mostly looking at the same students that went from fifth to, or fourth to fifth grade, or seventh to eighth grade. So in looking at this, you can see in the blue text at the bottom, that the blue indicates that it's a five percent change or more. The red indicates there was a slight dip, and the yellow would indicate it pretty much maintained, and the green would indicate that there was an increase in that. So from cohort to cohort, we saw that fifth grade math took a slight dip. I will say that as we look through the data, one of the things you'll notice with the fifth grade, uh, data and fourth grade is that while there was a slight dip, our, in, our masters level seems to be increasing, which is what we want to see. And we are seeing that from our fourth grade to our fifth grade cohort, which we'll talk about a little bit on the next slide, is that the gap from those students cohort to cohort is closing.
And so a little bit about, uh, eighth grade math and reading. So in the cohort data, the reading cohort data is a little more apples to apples, so to speak, looks a little more normal up there. Obviously increases that we wanna see between their seventh grade and their eighth grade year. The eighth grade math cohort data looks a little bit different. Uh, if you'll, uh, remember from time to time, we talk about their seventh grade math data, which is what you see there in the eighteen, nineteen column, uh, and their nineteen, twenty is the eighth grade data. And so the seventh grade math test is the only one that is really kinda unprotected or uninsulated by groups of pre-AP students or higher performing students. Uh, when we get into middle school math, we have seventh graders that take, if they're in seventh grade on level math, they take the test that you see there, that's the data you see there. If they take seventh grade pre-AP math, they actually take the eighth grade test. So when you look at some of the eighth grade math cohort, uh, that seventy-one there in passing for nineteen, twenty involves seventh grade pre-AP students. And so the eighth grade math, uh, early benchmark is really insulated by, uh, some higher performing students, even includes some geometry students. Okay? And so once, once they hit seventh grade and those math options start expanding, um, we don't get true cohort data, so to speak. Um, but you'll see in the performance that, you know, just performance last year versus this year does go up, so.
So could you, in theory, if you wanted to see how the actual eighth grade students are doing, could you extract the seventh grader APs that are taking the eighth grade exam if you wanted to?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and look at those individually, by group, class, campus, different things like that.
So overall, if you look at cohort to cohort, uh, with a one percent or more increase, there were ten out of twelve that showed an increase or an eighty-three percent. So the next slide and the remaining slides look at non-cohort data. So in looking at the non-cohort data, you can see that there are some slight dips, um, from, again, not comparing apples to apples, but last year's fourth grade, current fifth grade, to last year's fifth, which is current sixth grade cohort. Um, in those areas that are red, if we looked at those from cohort data, we only saw, um, for example, in fifth grade math, math, remember, there was only a one campus that showed a dip. Um, in fifth grade reading, it would've added six more that did not take the dip, so just kinda keep that in mind. I do wanna point out again, so if you go back to the prior slide, you'll see that cohort to cohort, the dips that are shown from non-cohort were not there. We're closing the gaps within that current fifth grade cohort. That cohort, um, academically, just didn't come in as strong as last year's fifth graders. But again, I do wanna stress that we are seeing a, an increase in our students at the mastery level, which we definitely wanna see. That's gonna help us both in domain one as well as domain three in our accountability system.
And just to follow up a little bit with, uh, middle school, in the eighth grade math and reading last year's, um, you know, comparative performance to this year's, uh, some pretty significant increases, um, I think obviously related to the way that, um, campuses are continuing to do things and as we improve in our efforts to serve kids with early interventions and making sure that we're addressing their individual needs, uh, that's there. Writing, um, you know, we see a little bit of, of a drop there in the meets, but a little bit of an increase in, in masters, uh, and holding pretty steady with, just kind of a, um, maybe a slight trending upward. And so continuing to focus our time and efforts there is part of what we do with, with reading and literacy. So, uh, you see the high school data, uh, some pretty significant increases as well as they've spent some time, uh, really honing in on English one and English two and expanding in the ways that we're serving those kids and trying to help them improve their performance in those areas.
Before you change, talk with me again about fifth grade math, passing approaches, approaches, and meets.
So if you go back and look at cohort for fifth grade math, in the approaches within that cohort, they saw a one percent change. Within the meets, they shot, or they're showing a five percent change of increase, and in mastery is six percent. So we know within that cohort overall, especially at the meets and masters, we're starting to close the performance gap. If you go to the slide that's non-cohort, you can see that our fourth grade that are now our current fifth, academically just look different than last year's cohort.
Now, you're the last, this is Dr. Hanson, so we know who these students are.
We know what campuses and we know what students. And we have already met with those campuses, we've developed a focus review with those teachers, we have instructional specialists pushing in either to support teachers or doing pullouts for small groups. The district's also hosting, it's called Star Madness, correct, Dr. Hanson?
Yes.
So those teachers can go and get supports on what are some ideas that you can develop in your classroom for our highest yield standards that we need to focus on for our students. Yes, ma'am?
All right, thank you. Before y'all click on the next one, let's, let me add a little bit of a disclaimer on here. The reason we spent so much time on the cohort data is that's pretty much whenever we're rolling into this year's accountability, that's how they score us. The, they, they finally woke up and did the right thing from the old tax to the star. Tax was, how did last year's juniors compare to this year's juniors? Totally different group of kiddos. Well, now, the cohort data, looking at that makes more sense, that they're actually scoring us now on that because it's not so much, what did last year's group look like with a totally different group of kids? So focusing on that continuous improvement, making sure that the, the kids within the cohort are showing growth, that helps us because they score individual kids. I don't know how many data points there are, y'all told me before, and I've heard the Commissioner say it, but about how much gets rolled into the system. It's thousands. And so they do that because it's cohort data. It's not so much apples to oranges data like it used to be. That was a tough, I thought that was a way tougher system. Now, the test wasn't as rigorous, I don't believe, the content wasn't as rigorous, but the, the system on trying to play the accountability was a lot tougher. You lived under that system. And, uh, trying to get one group of kids who looked totally different, acted totally different, had different needs, to perform better than last year's kids was always a tough, uh, tough chore.
Well, and we also have a focus not only on moving kids from proficiency levels, but also are they meeting their growth, which is helping us in two A. So we've created a Excel sheet with the help of Dr. Kuratin, or it's through Google Sheets, where when we plug in that data, it's gonna tell us based on the lead forward documents, the charts, how many more questions to move to another proficiency level and how many more questions to hit that growth measure. And we're looking for full points in growth. We know we can get some half points, but we're looking for those full points. So in looking at this slide, it gives you again, non-cohort data, and it's still showing you, the red indicates, put my glasses back on, the red is indicating, um, us, the dips, and of course, the green is showing the increases. Um, just as kind of pointing out a few right here, like on fifth grade math where it shows two out of seventeen, uh, for cohort data, it's eight out of seventeen. And fifth grade reading on approaches where it shows, uh, four out of seventeen, if you look at cohort, it's twelve out of seventeen. So we know that that cohort is closing those gaps, which is what we want to see, so that we can see the growth from them. And those are just a couple examples in elementary.
Pretty good overall, uh, secondary level for some of the early benchmark data and some of those returns and, um, you know, one there you see that, uh, I guess a little bit of a, a glitch in the middle there, that seventh grade writing, again, we continue to, you know, to work in that area. But, uh, overall, and what we really like to see is if you look down, you know, there on the end, the high numbers, uh, in masters, you know, that's where we're really challenging kids, um, of all levels and, and helping them kinda meet their highest potential.
You know, real quick, I should've also pointed out, 'cause I told you that this cohort was closing the gaps in meets and masters, is in fifth grade math, where it shows three out of seventeen, the cohort, we have eleven out of seventeen that have shown an increase in the meets level. Any questions on that slide before? So this last slide overall, if you look at what's in the black coloring, black and white with, which is the two thousand eighteen, nineteen benchmark in comparison to the last column, which is the eighteen, nineteen benchmark, this shows either an increase or a decrease. So the way it's set up is the red shows a decline of three percent or more, the yellow is maintained within that three percent range, so two percent to negative to positive two percent, and the green shows an increase of three percent or more. So you can see overall, um, we have two areas, again, at the elementary level, which is fifth grade math that from, again, this is non-cohort data that took a slight dip, but the other areas are either maintaining or showing an increase.
So in the non-cohort data, when we're talking about fifth grade math, even though the, the cohort data we're improving, does it give you any pause, or are we concerned about fifth grade math when it comes to, you know, the star in that certain grade and getting our kids where they need to be, you know, at that point in time? Even though they might be improving, uh, yeah?
We certainly are looking at a different group of kids. Um, the, any concerns would be that, again, this group did not come in as academically strong as last year's fifth graders. And you also can't change the variable of, you know, with promotions and things within, there have been some changes in, in math teachers across the district in fifth grade too, so there's several variables that come into play. Um, I think, I really think that with the focus review we have, and right now, we have our highest needs campuses with a significant amount of instructional support from CNI pushing into those campuses, helping with planning, and like I said, they're either pushing in and doing small groups, they're pulling out doing small group, um, we're using title funds to hire additional tutors. Uh, so, I mean, we've got a plan in place that we're really targeting, and we're not just targeting our students that are at pass or fail, it's really targeting what do our masters group need, what does the meet kids need, what are our approaches need and are not met. Our campuses have implemented several of them that are high needs, a Saturday school where they've got kids coming in. Um, we also have after-school tutoring on Tuesdays and Thursdays, or Monday, Wednesday across campuses to really work with those students. And then again, this year, we're also doing our Excel Academy to really target our high needs campuses with students obtaining or reaching the goal of meets and masters.
Now, our strategies are working. If you'll, if you'll look at the eighteen, nineteen benchmark, the far left approaches, and then you scroll over here to the eighteen, nineteen star and the approaches there, you see some, some gains from what the benchmark indicated to where the star indicated. So we're doing the same type of strategies, same type of interventions at this point in time. We will see an increase from what these benchmark approaches look like over here on the very far right, to what the actual star is gonna look like. And remember what bench, benchmarking does. Benchmarking really takes your curriculum to see how well they, they, they've performed up to that point, um, and is not as apples to apples on star. Uh, we're trying to do the best we can to project this, but it certainly gives us the student data to know where we need to send those students for interventions right now. And that's, again, we've been practicing this now for four or five years, and we've had pretty good results on making the jumps. And I think we'll see the same type of performance there as we did. You know, fifth grade math benchmark last year was a seventy-nine, I don't know what it compared to the year before, but we jumped up to ninety. So same strategies, uh, that we've had going for the last few years, and that's what's been working and we're sticking to it. So we should see an improvement from the numbers that you've got on eighteen, nineteen star, or excuse me, the nineteen, twenty benchmark to what the star is gonna happen with this, this, uh, spring blitz.
Okay. I did notice one thing on the, on the campuses as far as fifth grade math, um, says fifth grade math, English, yeah. Jones seemed to have some pretty good gains in all of those categories we measured, which seemed like a, a little bit of a...
Jones has good data for the year, yes, sir.
Yes.
Um, as far as benchmarking goes, I can't remember their map, but even their OHI has improved over last. And so that is a, a good catch right there, that yes, sir, that Jones's data is having a good year, and we hope that...
I think they were the only campus to have in that specific, in fifth grade math, in all three categories have major gains, so kudos to them.
Looking positive, uh, that a star result will, will coincide with that as well?
Good.
I don't have anything necessary to add for the secondary, um, you know, you do see the numbers there in front of you. Uh, and again, really working right now on the first administration, working towards, uh, raising percentages at the meets and masters level and targeted interventions for every kid at every level. So I think that, to answer your question, that, that stuff certainly does give us pause in how we go about doing things, and I think that's where the, the strategy comes from in terms of how we address, uh, groups of kids in different campuses at different grades, grade levels and trying to, uh, make sure that we are meeting their individual needs.
English one growth is good. Uh, that, that is an improvement over last year, obviously with the data, but that's, uh, that's significant, 'cause we've struggled to find quality English instructors, uh, throughout the school system in England, there's just not a lot of them out there. And, um, being able to, to get that under control, I think's a, a big win for us, and the data's matching.
Sure. And, you know, the ability to utilize a, a variety of different departments within the district to work together to, you know, meet the needs of every kid that we have there. And so, uh, we certainly are optimistic about what's gonna take place when we go and play the game coming up, and we're gonna continue our efforts up until then, so.
Just curious, uh, Dr. Crawford and to both of you, do we have a high mobility rate within the schools where we're having the challenges with these students? Do you?
I think you get more movement out of your elementary schools than you do your, your secondary schools. Um, and mobility rate is sometimes, I think, leaned upon as far as whenever you're looking for something that, but if you've got an equitable curriculum and you're, because the mobility's within Tyler ISD, it's, it's not, we're having a lot of mobility out, in and out of Tyler ISD, to Dallas, to the Valley, to Houston, it's within our own school system. So you know, yeah, obviously the, the impact there, obviously the impact there would be the quality of instructor, uh, delivering that, but as far as the curriculum goes, the expectations go, the, the supervisory tactics that we have, those are pretty equitable across the district. So high levels of mobility, I can't give you the, off the tip of my tongue, but there are some principles that do talk about that. I don't know about during the year, how much that occurs, but certainly from year to year, that does occur in, in our district in, in certain areas where there's a lot of rentals. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, moving along, we'll have a cybersecurity update next. As the board knows, a big portion of legislation that came out, uh, dealt with a lot with safety and security, uh, from this last session, and that's no different in regard to securing school systems, technological infrastructures. And we have the, the one and only Joseph Jacks to present to the board today about information security. Mr. Jacks?
Thank you, Board Members and Dr. Crawford. Um, so just jumping right, right in with, uh, information security, as you're well aware, uh, last year, Senate Bill eight twenty passed, um, that requires us to do three things regarding cybersecurity as a school district. We're required to adopt a cybersecurity policy, designate someone as our cybersecurity coordinator, and any, uh, cyber attacks, make sure that those are reported to TEA. Um, recently, the, uh, when y'all updated, uh, security, local policies for the district, one of the policies that was adopted was, uh, CQB local, and it states that the district shall develop a cybersecurity plan to secure the district's cyber infrastructure against cyber attacks and any other cybersecurity incidents determining cybersecurity risks and implement appropriate mitigation planning. So that covers us as far as creating a policy, but what that policy mandates is that we, as a district, create a cybersecurity plan, um, to cover cybersecurity incidents and make sure that we are secure against cyber attacks. So what we did is we got together and, uh, several people in my department, as well as some outside, uh, uh, an outside group that we partnered with helped us create a security plan for the district. Um, and this is a, a wide-reaching, broad, uh, plan that basically defines the mechanisms and the different ways and areas and folks involved with securing our cyber infrastructure and making sure that we are prepared, should we either have a ta, have an attack, how we can mitigate that attack, or also make sure that we are protected against that in most cases. Our cybersecurity plan is the kind of broad, overreaching, uh, document that defines our overall plan. And you have those documents in front of you, I believe, or in your packets. Supporting that plan is another packet called, what we call the Information Security Standards and Guidance. And what this is, is all the different, uh, guidances and standards that support our cybersecurity plan. Um, things like the district password standard, accessible use standard, bring your own device standard, network configuration, network access, different little, uh, documents or guidelines that we've created that we can use to enforce, uh, different things in our district. And what this does is helps us so that we say something happens and we need to change our password policy or our network access policy for some reason, we don't have to go back and revise the entire security plan, we revise that one standard within the cybersecurity standards document and update that, and that helps, and then that supports our overall plan. Uh, the, the second thing that SB eight twenty asked us to do was designate a cybersecurity coordinator. That person in our district is Daryl Kisa-Sunday, he's our network security engineer, he's been with the district for about twelve years, but was, we created the network security engineer actually in twenty seventeen, and that's when Mr. Kisa-Sunday took over that role. Um, so we've been actually ahead of the game as, as far as it goes with, uh, with cybersecurity as district. We've already had a, a security engineer in place for several years. Um, we've also already had some plant, some of these plans and, and guidelines that we've had to create for this law, we've also had a lot of these in place as well. The third thing that was mandated by eight twenty was that we report any attacks to TEA. Uh, the person who would do that would be Mr. Kisa-Sunday, since he's our security engineer. Fortunately, we have not had any, anything to report, so, so that's a really good thing. Um, another thing that we've taken a step further is we've partnered with a company named Sentinel Cyber Intelligence. They are a company out of Waco that specializes in helping school districts to, uh, build plans to become in compliance with SB eight twenty and also helps us to, uh, uh, find holes in our network. They do monthly penetration testing for us, so they have guys on their staff who try to hack our network, and they find holes and, uh, report back to us so that we can patch those holes and make sure that they find the vulnerabilities before the hackers or the, who, bad actors may find those. Uh, they also, in addition to the penetration testing that they do monthly, they also provide ongoing threat monitoring and assessment to the district. They provide us with an appliance that sits inside of our data center at the admin building. And what it does is it monitors every bit of incoming and outgoing traffic, as well as traffic within the district, and it reports back to Sentinel Cyber, and they will call us if they see something out of the ordinary. If they see a, an IP address or a computer or a program within our district, talking out to what's a known bad IP address, maybe somewhere in China or some other country, or something that's just been known and flagged as malicious, they'll call us. Well, if it's, if it's not super in high level, they'll send us an email and say, hey, you might wanna check this out. But if it's something that they deem to be a high-level threat or a known threat, they'll call us on the phone, they'll even call us on the weekend or in the middle of the night if it's something that they see it's high level enough that they, we need to block it right then. And they monitor us twenty-four seven. Uh, we've actually, uh, found a lot of holes and fixed a lot of things thanks to Sentinel Cyber. They've actually really helped us lock down our network a lot. That being said, when they came in and did their initial, uh, assessment of us, um, they told us that we were in the ninety percentile as far as being prepared and being in good shape. We, they didn't find a lot of holes, they weren't actually able to hack into our network, um, which they say ninety percent of the time they are able to hack in. So we have a lot of things in place from enterprise level, uh, antivirus, enterprise level, uh, content filters and firewalls to make sure that we're prepared for anything that may happen. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that we won't get hit, but we're trying, we, we think that we're well positioned to, uh, mitigate against most things that could, could come forward, so. The other, uh, the other thing that passed last year was House Bill thirty-eight, thirty-four, um, and it requires state and local governments, uh, and employees to compete, complete a certified cybersecurity training each year. Um, in order to come into compliance with this law, the initial deadline is June fourteenth of twenty twenty. However, we, uh, we've been actually training folks in our district since twenty seventeen. We use a product called Know Before, which is an industry-standard, uh, cybersecurity awareness training, and, uh, everyone in the district's been taking that training for the last couple of years. So that's really helped to make folks aware, that's one of the reasons I believe that we don't succumb to some of these penetration testing, and we do phishing attacks of our employees, uh, routinely, where we send out emails to try and trick them into, uh, doing something they're not supposed to, so that we can then turn around and remediate them by giving them additional training. And it's really helped, uh, cut down on the, the, uh, cut down on folks falling for those type of attacks, so.
Board, you will be subjected to this training. We have found a window. Uh, Reverend Mason, you will not be subjected to this training.
(laughing)
Mr. Newsom, you will be subjected to this training. Board, we have, we have found an email, or a, a window, excuse me, a window where you can take the training and actually be certified for, I think, two years. So unless you wanna take it more than once. It counts for, counts for this school year and next school year, so.
Is that what the kids...
Yes, yeah, I, hey, I'm, I'm getting it too, 'cause we're gonna figure out a way to tag it together. Yeah. Or that, yeah.
That's possible too, so.
So anyways, that'll be discussed with y'all at, at a different time, but, but, uh, again, we found that window, you're exempted, 'cause it's like May twenty-sixth, I think, right?
Yes, that will exempt me.
May twenty-sixth to June fourteenth, there's the window, so.
That's what I'm training?
Yes, yeah. And unlike some other systems, you can't skip through it quite as easily, like hit the forward button. Um, some of it you can, but most of it you can't. So, um, you will be trained in cyber, so those cybersecurity guys know all the tricks anyway, so you can't outsmart them that far.
So, so that's, that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those. You know, their packet, uh, includes the plan and the standards. If you have any questions about those, feel free to contact me, and I'll be happy to, to visit with you about those, but I'll answer any questions you may have.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Um, okay, we have a couple of action items, and I don't know if we need to take them separately or if we can just kinda summarize them and pass them together. Anybody have any preference on that? Separately? Okay.
And Mr. Washman, before, um, we do that, I think you would, uh, behoove this board publicly at the dice to honor our, uh, single-member District Three representative who recently passed, and, um, as we gear up for another transition... as we gear up for another transition on this school board, I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledged Freeman Sterling before we go there.
Absolutely, and I'm glad you did that. It is, you know, we wanted to do something to honor Freeman as we, as we worked, as we continued our work. And we have a, he was very, very involved in his fraternity, and their colors were purple and gold. And his district is District Number Three. So we found it fitting to honor his seat by keeping his name there and putting a jersey in his chair, just so the people of District Three can honor District, honor Freeman, and District Three can be represented by him even though he's gone until the time comes in which we have a replacement. And so thanks for bringing that up, Dr. Crawford. It was a beautiful service Saturday, and he will be missed and was a good man.
And you represented us very well.
Thank you. It's my honor. It was my honor to do so. That being said, moving on to these action items, we have to consider the approval of certification of unopposed candidates for single district, just member districts two and four. So.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Ready for a motion?
I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the attached certification of unopposed candidates for single-member District Two and Districts Two and Four.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And next, we have to consider the approval of an order declaring the cancellation of trustee elections and election of unopposed candidates for those same two, single-member districts, two and four. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So yeah, Trish isn't here today. She's out, out on the water somewhere, I believe. But we have Trish will, Trish will be, yeah, water skiing.
She might be there. You know, she's very adventurous.
On a cruise. She'll be back with us. And then we have Artis Newsom, who will be joining us come May.
Princes of the seas.
Uh, now it is time to go into executive session, and we will adjourn for executive session.
I do not anticipate action.
And we do not anticipate action to follow.